I'm going to call the meeting to order for March 13th. Roll call.
Supervisor Bennett?
Here.
Supervisor Parks?
Here.
Supervisor Long?
Here.
Supervisor Foye?
Here.
Supervisor Zaragoza?
We have about three public speakers that are going to speak for five minutes and the rest who are going to speak on the PLA is three minutes. Okay, so the first three is going to be, the first one would be Rudy Gonzalez.
Good morning Chairman Zaragoza, members of the board, Mr. Powers. My name is Rudy Gonzalez and I'm Edison's Public Affairs Manager here in Ventura County. I'm here this morning to provide information on Edison's rollout of smart meters in Ventura County. Smart meter deployment has started in most of West Ventura County. Briefings have been provided to all cities where deployment has started and customers have been notified of meter changeouts. I'll be completing briefings with East County cities where deployment is scheduled to begin in July. I'm here this morning to address concern in the community about this new technology. With the assistance of Glenn Seas, our technical expert, I hope to be able to address some of those concerns. Smart metering is part of Edison's plan to develop and operate a more reliable, secure, economic, efficient, safe, and environmentally friendly electric system. Among the goals of smart meters is to reduce residential energy consumption, reduce system peak load, and reduce greenhouse gas emissions. Edison Smart Connect will enable new programs and services that will help customers reduce electricity usage and save. The intent is to improve the customer experience by providing information that will empower customers to make choices in their energy consumption that will benefit not only their electric bill bottom line but also the environment. Customers will be able to access their previous day's energy use information online to help manage their daily use. They can select a monthly spending target through our new budget assistant feature and choose to receive email, voice, or text updates to track their progress. Customers can also sign up to receive alerts about upcoming Save Power Day events and earn up to $100 in bill credits per year by reducing energy use during these times. The Smart Connect system will improve reliability by allowing Edison to pinpoint outages and restore service faster and will enable the added convenience of our remote turn-ons and turn-offs for our customers, of which we normally receive over a million requests per year. Automation of our meter reader function and associated activities like the turning on and off of electric service will eliminate the thousands of truck trips per year, reducing the need for meter readers to walk on property and reduce greenhouse gas emissions throughout our service territory. We have been made aware of concerns related to smart meter privacy and security. Smart meters tell Edison how much a customer is using and when, the two pieces of information we need to bill them accurately and to help customers make informed energy usage decisions. The same rules and safeguards around customer privacy in place today will continue to apply to smart meters. Edison does not sell your personal information, ever. Edison does not distribute or use personal information for anything other than providing electric service, no exceptions. Edison's customer information is considered confidential. Edison does not release customer information to third parties unless authorized in writing by the customer or as required or authorized by law or the California Public Utilities Commission. As an added level of security, Edison has conducted extensive security planning and testing of smart meters. We have developed comprehensive security processes and procedures, many of which were adapted from the banking and defense industries. All information transmitted between smart meters and Edison is encrypted using U.S. government-approved and recommended standards. Smart meters will not allow Edison to know what equipment you were using in your home or allow Edison to regulate your energy usage. Only the California Independent System Operator has the authority to curtail energy usage through the declaration of a stage-three electricity emergency. This would only be done to protect the integrity of the statewide electrical grid. For those customers who wish to delay smart meter installation for any reason until the CPUC completes its regulatory process in respect to an opt-out choice for Edison residential customers, they may call 800-810-2369 to be placed on the delay list. Once opt-out fees have been established by the CPUC, customers can then decide if they wish to permanently opt out. For PG&E customers, the approved opt-out fees are initially $75 with a monthly charge of $10. For income-qualified, low-income customers, the initial fee is $10 with a monthly charge of $5. The CPUC's rationale for these charges is that smart meters are the new standard for all customers and that the cost of maintaining separate meter reading and bill systems required for non-standard service should be paid by those customers who opt out and not by other ratepayers. I appreciate your time this morning.
Thank you Rudy.
Mr. Chair.
Rudy, call in.
Rudy, could you electronically send that to my office and your testimony?
Absolutely, yes.
It has good information, thank you.
Rudy, go ahead.
Rudy, I appreciate you coming. I ran into Rudy the other day and asked him to come up and I know you had heard this information because we were kind of told that there wasn't an opt-out, if people wanted to opt out, we had a lot of people. And so it sounds like now if you call, it's not an opt-out, it's a delay. And at some point, the PUC is going to allow you to opt out, but it's going to cost you something to do it.
That's correct.
So there is some people to do that.
Absolutely.
We can use that information.
I appreciate that.
And Glenn Seas is going to provide a little technical information regarding radio frequencies.
Glenn followed by Lucas Thayer.
Hi there. My name is Glenn Seas. I am the manager of Southern California Edison's Electric and Magnetic Field and Energy Group. I have nearly 20 years' experience on the EMF issue and am a co-author of a recent peer-reviewed scientific journal article in which we conducted extensive measurements and calculations on the RF signals utilized by smart meters to communicate. And I know there was concerns raised about RF issues prior to us coming here, so I would like to make a few comments on the nature of those signals. The bottom line is that the RF exposures from smart meters are similar to other exposures that are commonly in our environment, including those that are pretty much everywhere we go, including RF signals from AM/FM broadcast antennas, cellular networks, as well as the RF signals from personal devices we all use such as Wi-Fi, cell phones, baby monitors, the list goes on. What we do know about the signals from those devices as well as from smart meters is that they are low-level and they comply with the FCC's health standards for RF exposures by wide margins. Now, the reason the exposures from smart meters are low are three. The first off is smart meters are very low-power devices. So power really says, how strong is this device? How far can it transmit? And to put this in perspective, power is measured in watts. Now, an AM/FM broadcast station typically is about 50,000 watts. Walkie-talkies about 5 watts. Cell phone is about 1 watt and then a smart meter is about a quarter of that, a quarter of a watt. So it's a very low-power device, very similar to devices we use all the time. The second reason why the exposures from smart meters are low are that the signals from RF meter or from any RF source diminish extremely rapidly with distance. So literally, if you get a few feet away from a smart meter or if you're inside the home, the signal has diminished so much that it's similar to the background levels, again, that you're going to have from AM/FM broadcast stations, cellular towers, personal devices you use. Lastly, the third reason why smart meter exposures are low is that the smart meters transmit for very short periods throughout the day. Now, they do operate throughout the day, but when they transmit, they transmit for very short times, milliseconds at a time. So if you were to add that up, which we did in our study, the actual amount of time a meter transmits is minutes, if not seconds, a day. So because it's not transmitting that often or that long during the day, the exposures are small. So the bottom line again is that the RF exposures from smart meters are low, they comply with FCC standards, but we want to make sure our customers get good information. So we've posted detailed studies, information from the World Health Organization and other health agencies on RF issues on our website and we're available to talk to anybody who has questions. Thank you.
Thank you Glenn. I've got, excuse me sir, I've got... What question for the supervisor?
Sure.
I mean, you've given some statistics. I'd just like some real practical comparisons.
Sure.
The cellphone that we use, right?
Yes.
How's it compared to the smart meter?
Off the top of my head, I can't give actual numbers. I can get you those numbers, but it's going to be higher because the reason why is you're holding a cellphone right next to your head and because RF signals diminish very rapidly with distance, you're right here. And so that's going to be a much higher exposure than you're going to get from a cellphone. You would have to be probably looking at your smart meter right like that to get a similar type of exposure. Typically, most people are minimally two or three feet away and typically are inside the house where it's hundreds, if not thousands, of times less.
How's it compared to listening to your radio?
Well, you know, the radio, if you're inside your home, it's going to be similar to the kind of exposures you get from broadcast antennas because those are all in the environment, everywhere you go, because the tower's up on some mountain somewhere. So you just have this level of RF throughout the valley, the valley or wherever you're at, and it's going to be similar to what you have from smart meters.
What about these collector towers that you have to have that's been brought up quite a bit?
So they're not actually towers. What we have is every 500 homes, there'll be what's a collector meter. So the way the mesh network works is each of these meters talk to one another and then one in 500 meters has, kind of like a modem. You ever, I have a computer that if I want to, anywhere I go, I can just dial up on the network and it talks to a cell tower. It's basically like having a cellphone on the tower there or on the meter and the meter actually speaks to a cell tower. That's how the information gets back to Edison. But there's no real cell tower that we use or we build. We use existing technology and it just has that modem that talks to the cell networks.
So the one in every 500 homes?
Yes.
What kind of power is on that one?
That is about 1 to 1.5 watts for that 500. So it's similar to a cellphone.
So you're saying a cellphone is 1 to 1.5 watts?
Yes, exactly.
And a smart meter is a quarter of a watt?
Quarter of a watt and then the cell, the 1 in 500 is about 1 to 1.5 depending on the technology.
All right, so the regular cellphones are compared, if you're standing equal distance from both of them, you're getting more from the cellphone?
If you're equal distance, it'll probably be about the same if you had that 1 in 500 one. It'll be a little less for smart meters, the typical smart meters that everybody has.
So that's going to be 1 in 500 homes and that's going to have more power and how are you going to determine where that one goes?
There are technical reasons where, so when we deploy the meters, we look to see how we can build this network and see the good geographic locations, see what the coverage is going to be and do it that way and see what works best for the network.
And does that person have, is that person aware that they have the...
I'm not, I don't believe we're notified specifically of the technology. Again, the RF exposures from that are going to be very similar to the other exposures, slightly higher, but again, qualitatively, if you're inside the home, the exposures are going to be very similar to other exposures you have from other sources. And they comply with FCC limits by wide margins.
So there's not going to be some notification of every 500?
No, it won't be, yeah.
Those are good questions. Is there going to be, does that system look different than the other one, than that 500? I mean, is there something on there that looks different than a different meter?
What it is, it's going to be a little, it'll be about a two-inch ring, so your meter will stick out just a little more than the regular meter. So regular meters just look like the old meters except they're electronic. The 1 in 500 has just a little extra ring, which is that modem.
There's also a question that came up. You know, you go to some apartment buildings and all of a sudden you'll see 40 meters right next to one unit because that's where all the meters are?
Right.
That seems to be an awful lot more exposure there. Is there, what do we deal with that issue?
Right, so that's a good question. So to answer that question, what we did in the study we conducted is we looked at a bank of 10 meters to see what kind of exposures and then looked at a bank literally at this testing facility the manufacturer has with thousands of meters operating at the same time to see what the exposure is. And the bottom line is because the field's diminished so rapidly with distance, the addition of the, each of the fields from those meters is small if you're just a little away because it diminishes. It's like being in a crowd even though somebody's talking loud. If you get a bunch of people, you hear it, but the level's not necessarily loud. And so they don't add up and we've checked those out and they comply again with the FCC standards.
We had a lot of people come in here with a lot of statistics and a lot of these people that came were very much environmentally friendly and all this stuff. And so on this kind of an issue, it wasn't only rights they felt were taken, but they were really concerned with this. So where are they getting that information?
Well, there's, nowadays, information is available all over the place on the internet. And what Southern California Edison does and what we try to pass on to our customers and regulators is either use information from the World Health Organization or National Institute of Environmental Health Sciences or peer-reviewed literature to make sure that goes through the proper vetting process. There are a number of reports out there that I've seen that I have, they have technical issues, to be frank, on that and I don't think they stand the test if you were to take them apart. That could be where some of that information's coming from.
But either way, if any of these people are uncomfortable that they can do this delay that Rudy had talked about and they can opt out of it and stay, and they can do whatever they want, just pay an extra fee to have somebody come out and read it?
Exactly, and we'd be more than glad to talk to him, give him information and just try to discuss the issue because I think a lot of times if you have information, it helps the situation, helps people feel more comfortable with the smart meters.
Okay, well, I appreciate you coming and explaining all this to us. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
We have Thayer and then, just reminded, we're talking about the phones. If you have a phone, put it on vibrate just for information now that we're talking about phones. Anybody in the audience?
We're talking about us.
And us too. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Lucas Thayer. I'm a human, not a corporation, and I'm here to talk about human rights. I really like human rights. They're all I've got. Do all you like human rights? Does everyone here like human rights? Does anyone not like human rights? Sleep is a human right. Everyone does it. Some people do it outside. This is illegal. That's unacceptable. These people need to sleep outside because that's the only place they have to go to sleep. This needs to be decriminalized and public space needs to be made available for these people 24/7 for all legal activities, including sleep. There's nothing wrong with someone that needs to sleep and they should not be criminalized and arrested by police officers just because they wanted to get some sleep. Bathroom access is a human right. Everyone uses the bathroom. Everyone needs to use the bathroom. Some people can't afford a home to go to to use the bathroom. So the government needs to provide bathrooms for people to go. They do it in Los Angeles, they do it in San Francisco. I would like to see it in Ventura. If people can use the bathroom, then they wouldn't use the bathroom outside. Food, good food, clean food, non-genetically-modified food is a human right. It should be made accessible to all humans because all humans need it. And medical care is a human right. People need medical care in order to survive and currently, medical care is only available to the super-rich. That's unacceptable. Education is a human right. Education should be free. I just learned today that there are only three community colleges in the county of Ventura and that's not enough. There need to be more community colleges that need to be made available for free to anyone that seeks an education and they need to be in smaller rural areas. I live in a small district of Miramonte, which is, I believe, Steve Bennett's district, and there's no college in Miramonte. I would have to drive to Ventura at $5 a gallon for gas, which I can't afford. And this planet can't afford for students to need to use gas just to go to their school. The political process is a human right. Everyone needs access to the political process and everyone needs equal access to the political process. Corporations are not people and money is not speech, but right now in the United States of America, money is considered speech and corporations are considered people and they can donate unlimited amounts of money to political campaigns thereby influencing them beyond the capacity of normal, human people. This county needs to pass a resolution stating the corporations are not people and money is not speech and get all corporate money out of the political campaigns because if money is speech, then I don't have any. Freedom of speech is a human right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, I have time left, right?
And by the way, thank you, no clapping, please, you know, thank you so much.
There's a May 1 global general strike and boycott. If anyone has any grievances, if anyone has any grievances on May 1, then don't go to work on May 1. It'll be International Workers' Day, International Students' Day, International Women's Day. If anyone has any problem with anything in the world on May 1, go on strike.
Thank you Lucas. So I just want to remind the folks, you know, when we do have comments, please, no clapping, you know, so thank you so much. And the next item is our PLA and we have Jeff. That's item number four. Yes, we're going to go through that now. Thank you Jeff.
Good morning Chair Zaragoza, board members, Mr. Powers, for the record. My name's Jeff Pratt. I'm with the Public Works Agency and of course, today I'm going to be talking about PLAs per your board's direction. I should say that I'm joined by a number of new friends in the audience, representatives of Association of General Contractors, the three design-build teams, Southwestern Regional Council of Carpenters, the Tri-County Building Trades Council, and the Ventura County Contractors Association, all of, who've been working very hard over the last couple of weeks per your direction to get to where we've gotten to today. Of course, the purpose of today's meeting is to follow up on the February 28th meeting where we received some direction from your board.
Jeff, you can take your time too because we're going to ask you some questions too.
All right. Slow down.
Slow down. Thank you.
Okay, here we go.
Thank you Jeff.
All right, I'm ready. So you, your board said that we should go negotiate further. We failed to close the gaps in the first round of negotiations on these issues. You wanted us to attempt to close the gaps on three major issues and of course, those were core worker limitations, jurisdictional dispute resolution, and representation fees, AKA dues. During the discussion on February 28th, your board talked about maximizing local hire, minimizing cost impacts to the project, maintaining a competitive proposal environment, adhering to county council guidance, and being inclusive in this process. And we think that we've done all of that. The further negotiations started immediately with the call to meet at the end of that meeting. It was agreed, oh, sorry. Thank you. We started that day, we actually scheduled eight consecutive meetings of four hours in length each with everyone, all the stakeholders to attend. They were all invited, they all participated. It was only necessary to hold four of those meetings before we got to a point where it wasn't necessary to have the whole group together. At each of the meetings, decision-makers were either present or were on call and for the meetings that we didn't use, there was a lot of email flying around, one-on-one meetings and negotiations going on between individuals.
Jeff, we certainly know what these initials stand for, but for this archives and for the public, would you call out AGCC and just who they are?
I sure will. So the acronyms in the second, third bullet there, AGC stands for the Association of General Contractors. SIAG stands for the Construction Industry Advisory Group, a group that we hired to help us with this, who have some expertise on PLAs and they're very reasonable and they can be hired on short notice. The DB is for the design-build teams. We have three pre-qualified design-build teams who actually pre-qualified before we started talking about a PLA. That will come into the conversation later. SRCC is the Southwest Regional Council of Carpenters. TBTC is the Tri-County Building Trades Council and VCCA is the Ventura County Contractors Association. These were all the stakeholders that I think your board directed us to include in our talks and they were all there. The first meeting, we set the agenda for all of the rest and we decided to cover the issues in that order. We started with core staff limitations. We moved on after that to the jurisdictional dispute resolutions and then we went to representation fees. I'm going to jump to the chase on what happened here, then I'm going to back up and describe. There were a lot of things going on in parallel and I'm going to describe that to you later in the presentation. During the, oh, I backed up, sorry. During the talks on core worker limitations, we started with the previous positions, those positions we'd ended with before the last presentation to your board. At that time, AGC, the DB teams, SRCC, and VCCA were at the position of either 40 core workers with the balance coming from Ventura County apprenticeship programs or 70% core workers with 30% apprentices coming from the Ventura County apprenticeship programs. At that point, in the previous negotiations, the Tri-County Building Trades were at three core workers with a one-to-one exchange rate, starting with the one-to-one exchange rate and then after you got three core workers on the job, the balance were to be filled from the various craft union halls. And everybody understands the exchange rate. One core worker, one person from the union hall, then two to get three.
One-to-one, okay.
And so at the end of our gap closing negotiations on this issue, the AGC, DB teams, SRCC, and VCCA remained in the same position as the previous negotiation. Tri-County Building Trades had moved off their position of three core workers and for Berg only, Berg Electric, which is a subcontractor to McCarthy, they agreed to the first 10 coming from the core work staff, the second 10 coming at a one-to-one exchange rate for a maximum of 20, all the rest to be coming from the hall, journeymen, and then all apprentices would be from the Ventura County training programs. For all of the rest of the crafts, and there are 14 crafts represented by the trade, it was going to be five workers, five core workers at a one-to-one exchange rate. On the issue of jurisdictional dispute resolution, in our previous negotiations, the trades wanted to use the international plan, also referred to in the vernacular as the plan with a capital P. Southwest Regional Council of Carpenters wanted to modify the plan in three ways. They wanted binding west coast local arbitration, not using east coast arbitrators but west coast arbitrators. They didn't want any appeal of the arbitrator's decision to be allowed, which is allowed under the plan, and they didn't want the plan to be modified after the PLA was signed.
Feel better.
Yeah, I can hear myself now. So the, so the danger was that typically in a PLA, you'll see that it's the plans adopted and future modifications of the plan are adopted and the carpenters were afraid with this last bullet that it could be modified in such a way as to negate the first two bullets. So those were the three demands they'd made. In the gap closing negotiation, there was no movement on this issue and I'll get to that in just a little more detail on another slide. Representation fees, also known as dues, in the previous negotiations, the design-build teams, the two that have non-union work staff or non-union contractors working with them did not want to pay dues. They did not feel like they were going to get anything for it. The trades and the carpenters argued that yes, you might get something for it, you will be required to be represented by us, you should be paying dues in case that representation is required. In the gap closing negotiations, this is one area where we had some success and they all agreed to pay dues, so that's part of the good news in this presentation.
When you say they agreed, who's agreed to pay what?
The carpenters agreed, Hitzel Phelps, who have self-performing carpenters, agreed to pay dues. It's roughly 3.5% of their hourly wage. And Berg, the electrical, if they were to get the job with McCarthy, agreed to pay dues for their electrical workers and that's roughly 5% of the hourly wage.
They were going to pay it out of their, it wasn't going to be the worker, it was going to not go?
Yes, both of them said that they were going to pay above and beyond the wage and so they wouldn't be taking it from their worker. And one of them said that they would subtract that from the profit margin that they put into their, that they were putting into the proposal.
I'm going to ask a, I'm going to ask the question. Generally, profit margins are 5, 6, 7%?
Well, we've got the design-build team. Well, we got the design-build teams here. I don't know, I don't know the answer to that question, I'm sorry, Supervisor Long.
Okay, fine.
That's probably a trade secret.
Do we have a, yeah. Nobody wants to tell what they make, but do we have an opportunity, by that happening, to increase the cost? I mean, if somebody's going to pay for this, that's a big issue, so you don't know. I know, I'm asking a question, you don't know, you're not there.
It's just part of the cost.
I could only speculate.
Well, we're looking for sharp pencils.
No, that's not me, sharp pencils, somebody's going to pay that, how much is it worth? Hundreds of thousands?
In the hundreds of thousands, yes. The, it doesn't go in.
But that's what included in the bid, I bet you, right?
They could, in the proposal, right. After four four-hour meetings with all of the stakeholders, we were, we had reached the conclusion of any negotiation that required all of them to be in the room. Representation fees, the problem had been solved, although there's still some minor details to work out in the process of how that actually works and gets paid, because there's some legal problems. We think we've got that solved. But the core worker limitations, we couldn't solve with that large group, or we didn't even need the large group. We got to a point where it was just down to Berg Electric and the IBW. And then jurisdictional dispute resolution, it became clearly evident, I got my PhD in this, that there's some big AFL-CIO problems that we ain't going to solve at the local level. So, we just punted on that one. So, the, so, our next step was to continue working the issues and to start drafting a PLA, because your board had desired a PLA be presented to it at this meeting. So, with the drafting of the PLA, we continued to work with all the stakeholders. We used the sort of discussion constraints that your board had given us in the previous We con, what did I put there? Conform to two negoti, let's see, I don't remember that third bullet. We continued to negotiate core worker limits with the two parties, IBW and the Berg Electric. We also started looking at RFP options, whether or not we should put local hire requirements in all the project contract documents, and we looked at local outreach programs requirements in all contract documents. With the PLA, there were a number of ways we could draft it, and it could be centric to any one of the interests sitting around the table. And so, PLA one, number one, would be the Safe Harbor PLA, which would be centric to Ventura County concerns as they relate to legal risks and so forth. We could draft it centric to the design-build teams, include their numbers for core workers. We could draft it centric to the carpenters, including their language for jurisdictional dispute resolution, draft it to the building trades, including their numbers for core workers and their jurisdictional dispute resolution language. And we looked at, again, in the RFP, local hiring requirements and goals, and outreach requirements in those contract documents. The group decided to go with PLA option number four, because it seemed to include the most people, the most workers, and recall, that's the one that is centric to the building trades. Although we went with option number four, we continued gap negotiation on core worker limits, hoping to close that and get back to a potential PLA that had everybody in the tent. In the PLA number four that we drafted, we used the plan, again, that's the International Building Trades Plan for dispute resolution, which means the carpenters fell off, and we included representation fees, and we're still in the process of developing how those are going to get paid. We also went paragraph by paragraph, page by page, and polished up all of the language to the satisfaction of all of the stakeholders in the room, with the exception of core workers and jurisdictional dispute resolution. Parallel to that, staff started drafting a contingency PLA in case we failed in the gap negotiations and there was still some dispute on core worker limits. That option, of course, was PLA number one, the Safe Harbor option, and in the Safe Harbor option, in order to get more people into the tent, we included the Southwest Regional Council of Carpenters Plan language, which is the modified Plan language with those three points that I talked about earlier. Of course, we included the dues, and we had the same polishing that went on, the same language from the other agreement. When we finished with number four, we were not able to cover, to close the gap, so we did sort of this pro and con kind of analysis. The pros of going with PLA number four, which is, by the way, attached in your package, is that we get labor piece for 70% of the crafts on the job. The carpenters are out, they won't sign it because of the jurisdictional dispute resolution language. We think it may increase local labor. It's really going to depend on how staff is assigned according to collective bargaining agreements of each of the individual crafts. What happened during the negotiations, and it came up late in the process, very late in the process, was that the trades asked us to include language in the draft PLA number four that required them to use local residents out of the hall. In that case, they would have been able to supersede the collective bargaining agreement requirements for work assignments and give preferential treatment to Ventura County residents. That flew in the face of county council's guidance, so it's not in there that way. The language is in there as encouraged to use local labor. And they had some comfort with that, they feel like that might be enough in order to redo work assignments, but we're just not sure how that'll work out.
Could I ask, and I'll ask Leroy. So, your discomfort level with that language was?
Well, the reason, because we, if we require that as a condition in the PLA, then it obviously is something that we are imposing that we do not need for a PLA, because the unions can't do it on their own. So, the whole concept is, we're going to, if we enter a PLA, the justification for it is to avoid labor strife. And by definition, we don't need this clause. In fact, the unions can't even do it. So, it'd be like, in my view, we can't superimpose things we want that the unions can't even ask for.
Okay.
Because then we're imposing it, and it's inconsistent with the idea that we do this only to get labor piece.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
The other thing that, we managed to get two of the design-build teams into the tent with this PLA. Of course, the design-build team that's not in the tent is McCarthy with Berg Electric, and the trades really preferred this. The downside of this PLA is that there's some legal risk, and that legal risk is associated with any sort of straying from the Safe Harbor guidance that we've gotten from county council. And then, it's also, Berg has stated that if this is the PLA that your board adopts, they will drop out of the process. They've been in the process a long time, they were in the process before with the understanding, they assumed that there would be no PLA on the project. PLAs weren't described until after we'd pre-qualified them, so they've made some significant investments by their own, were hundreds of thousands of dollars, and then they've argued that they have lost opportunity costs. They were, they've been here working on this when they could have been working on other proposals.
But Phelps and Clark's will, will continue?
Hensel Phelps will continue, because the carpenters aren't signing, and they have, they won't be covered, their carpenters, which are self-performing, won't be covered by the PLA. And Clark is almost all union, all the major trades are union. I think they've stated that 90% of their workforce would be union, there's only a small percentage that is not union. This may not increase local labor. Again, that's just back to, we don't know, we can't tell your board whether it will or won't, we don't know. There's potential for project delay in that McCarthy has said, when Berg drops, McCarthy would request of your board, using some of the same rationale, we were in this before, that you pre-qualify some more electrical subcontractors, because the two remaining pre-qualified subcontractors are not up to the standards they want, and they cannot be competitive with them. So, if your board were to approve that.
Jeff, you got a question? Could I ask you a question? And again, it's probably for our council. The fact that our RFP didn't include disclosing that we're looking at a PLA, and if we do a PLA and Berg doesn't go along with it, or McCarthy doesn't go along with it, does that put us in a potential litigatable situation?
It does put us in a potential litigation situation, but my advice has been, I do not think the county would be liable in that situation. I mean, the argument is that the contractors detrimentally relied upon these representations and incurred a lot of expenses and reliance upon that, and then the county changes the rules at the end, and they sue us and claim that it was bad faith or some kind of implied contract. I don't think that's a good lawsuit, because the county has a right not to build the project at all. I think it's, it's clear, at least in writing, that the county doesn't have to go forward with the RFP even if it issues it. So, people who engage do so at their own risk up to this point. Now, as we go beyond to other stages, it may get more formal and more binding obligations on the county. But I certainly can't say there's no risk that we would be sued, and who knows what the outcome would be.
So, Leroy, we're not at that stage yet, were?
I don't think the county's made any commitment to continue with the process under the terms originally communicated. And so, I think the board is free to change that and could defend such a lawsuit, but I'm just saying, because of the amounts of money at stake, I can't rule out that there would not be a lawsuit. And you can't predict the outcome of lawsuits, you know.
Or any lawsuit. But we would just have the cost of defending something, if there's that.
Well, and we could lose.
And we could lose, okay.
I've stated my 25% rule before, which is, there's a 25% rule of anything happening in litigation. I mean, you don't want to get in litigation, so I can't rule it out.
You had originally stated, too, that if everybody agrees and signs the contract, then, you know, no one's going to sue anybody, because they've all agreed to it in terms of.
That's, that's true.
That's where we were trying to get. So, the, the potential for project delay is there if your board decides to grant McCarthy's wish and re-prequalify, or reopen the pre-qualification process for electrical contractors. Our rough estimate of time for that would be two to three months, and then McCarthy would probably want some time to partner, do contract documents, and do a little bit of catch-up work. So, our rough estimate of the delay of the project, should your board accede to that, is about four to six months. If your board says.
And a cost of about what?
Well, we're running, our rough estimate back of the envelope calculations are $400,000 a month that we're burning right now.
So, 1.6 to $2 million kind of delay?
Yes. So, if your board does not, yes, sir.
What are you using, the 2% in that, is that what you?
That's right, the 2% construction cost increase, right. We, if your board decides not to grant McCarthy's wish, then McCarthy will drop out of the process, which will, again, create a little more legal risk, as described before, and decrease the amount of competition that we have on the project, which may have impacts to costs.
But you still have two remaining DBs, Mike.
That's correct.
Okay.
The, the other PLA that staff developed was the Safe Harbor PLA, and we did that because we didn't know whether or not we were going to be able to close the gap and get everybody in the tent and get into that really safe place where everybody's signing the PLA that, that we negotiated. So, the pros of this PLA are that you get labor piece with 30% of the crafts, that is the carpenters, the way we drafted it, which includes their jurisdictional dispute resolution language. It conforms to county council's guidance in all ways, and it's approved by all of the stakeholders with the exception of the trades. The cons are that the trades won't sign this, and this may not increase local labor either. So, we then went on to look at RFP options.
Let me go back, keep back, okay. So, looking at that, so you only get 30% of the people even participate in this?
30% of the crafts.
Right, will participate. So, that goes against everything we said about everybody participating, that's one thing. And, and we may not get local hire. Okay, I, so what was the, I mean, that, I know it was probably just an option, it's all you had?
That was, that was a backup option in case your board wanted to explore other options.
Other options, because I know part of our thing is, everybody needs, just everybody has to be together on this thing to make, to go forward, and you're saying, this is another option, but only includes 30%.
That's right.
Okay.
Another question, and this option calls for the 60 to 100-day last hiring process.
That's right. The term, sorry.
Establishes the core, basically.
Yes, the terminology we've been using, Supervisor Long, is the definition of core worker is 60 out of the last 100 days, and then we, then we've just been discussing limits on that definition. And everybody around the table, all the stakeholders that you asked us to include, agree that should be the definition. And they also agree that the 100-day count starts on the day that that particular craft shows up on the job. So, it doesn't start when you sign the PLA or anything, because for obvious reasons, like, the painters won't be there until four years down the road, for example.
Right. The other question, this jurisdictional issue between the carpenters and the trades, if I read all of this material correctly, there's not even a way to do a side letter that includes both, because then you have the conflict of the ability of the contractors to manage that, should there be a dispute?
We didn't discuss a side letter, so I don't know the answer to that question. If I had to guess, given the tone of the discussions, no, that wouldn't work. What we did, what we did look at in a lot of detail were some other agreements that had been signed by both the carpenters and the trades in various parts of California. We came up with two really promising agreements, one is the agreement, the most recent agreement for the San Francisco International Airport, and the other was the San Diego Unified School District Agreement. In the San Francisco Airport Agreement, they have something that they call the Northern California Plan.
That's right.
What the Northern California Plan contained was binding, or west coast arbitration in front of the plan. It doesn't say anything about binding arbitration, but when I talked with representatives from San Francisco County, some of the people who had worked on this, they said that it was assumed that it was binding, and that they were going to act as if it was binding, and that they didn't expect anything to be appealed to the national in Washington DC, or international in Washington DC. When we had that discussion with the carpenters and the trades here, they said, we want to be explicit, we want to buy, we want those three points, we want to be very explicit. And the trade said, our international will let us adopt this language wholesale, verbatim, but you can't change anything. And I believe that representatives of the trades were in contact with Washington DC on that issue, and the trades let us know early that there were some things that they had to have Washington's permission to negotiate, and that was, this was probably chief among them. So, if they were going to make any compromises, they had to get Washington's permission. So, then we went to the San Diego, it was two PLAs, one PLA had the carpenters language in it, the other PLA had the trades language in it, and then there was a letter of agreement that was signed that talked about how the process would work. And so, if you're a carpenter working on something and the trade disputed the language, use the carpenters dispute resolution language, and vice versa. The trades here said, we're not signing that agreement, we will, Washington will not let us do the agreement. So, we looked at the contractors and said, what do you think? And they said, we're not signing two contradictory agreements and getting caught in the middle of this. So, we punted. And there was a lot of effort put into it, but it was just, it became obvious that Washington, there's some, something going on back east. So, we punted on that one. So, we went to RFP, looked at the RFP, and one of the things that have been done in other RFPs, where they are not general law counties, but charter counties and school districts, they put requirements for local hire into the contract documents. They set numbers, targets, they ask for, you know, best available efforts, and then there are penalties if you don't achieve those. The pros of that is it's pretty easy to implement, you know, there's real requirements, real specific requirements with penalties attached to them, probably small cost impact, because these design-build teams are used to doing this in all sorts of venues, they have mechanisms in place for it, and, and we know that it will increase local labor, you know, because your board's going to tell them what it is that you want. The cons are that there's no guarantee of labor piece, we don't have everybody in the tent, and it really, it strays a long way from the Safe Harbor that's described by county council's guidance to us.
So, under that RFP, they can strike, they can walk out, they can do those disruptions of?
They can.
Okay. Ask Jeff, okay.
How does it increase local hiring?
Well, your board says, maybe, right now, the design-build teams are saying, in general, that they expect to get somewhere between 40, 60%. Your board says, I want 70, or whatever it is, and starts up the ante a little bit. There are penalties associated with that if they don't reach those, and so, the idea is, I guess, they maximize their effort.
And we can do that legally?
No.
Oh.
That's where it strays from county council's guidance.
Okay, that's right, is that, okay, yeah, I didn't think we could be legally telling them to do it.
Yet, some of this, it becomes a risk assessment, and, and we tried to just provide you with some idea of what the relative risks of these, each of these pursuits might be, understanding that your board's desire is really to maximize local labor on this project. We also looked at putting outreach requirements.
Hold on, Jeff, I should write. Yeah.
Should we? You, you said it comes down to risk assessment, so County Council says it's not, doesn't believe that it's legal, it's less risky than some others, or you, you're doing that kind of risk assess?
Well, in our own analysis of risk assessment, you know, it includes things like the likelihood someone's going to sue. And then it includes the likelihood of damages if they are successful in their lawsuit. We haven't really gotten into that, and, you know, I don't think it's necessarily, you know, I wasn't prepared to have that kind of discussion with the board.
Okay, thank you.
As far as whether it's illegal or not, that's a different thing.
So the last thing we looked at was putting outreach requirements into the contract documents. The pros of this is that it meets County Council's guidance. It would assure more aggressive community outreach, you know, telling the design build teams, you've got to do this. And it's not telling them that they have to hire locally. It's telling that they got to get out in the community and try and, and drum up business locally and, and get people on the job. We think that this will increase local labor, and there's no cost increase, because typically the design build teams sell us, they do this anyway. In fact, we've met with them, and some of them just have teams that specialize in this sort of thing. So we don't think there's cost increase associated with that. Again, the cons, there's no guarantee of labor peace. What, a, a recent discussion, a discussion that occurred late yesterday, as I recall, was that the contractors have with a, this sort of a requirement in the contract documents, send a letter to union halls, and the union halls have been able to use that letter to go around the collective bargaining agreement requirements and send local people to the job. We didn't get to explore that very much, but it's something that, that promises to help with the increase of local labor. We also, just for your information, as late as 1:00 yesterday afternoon, we're meeting with IBW and the, and Berg, which, it was at the beginning of the negotiations, it was thought that that would be impossible to get the two into the same room. It's a very cordial meeting, there was a lot of good discussion, but we didn't get any movement on the, the numbers, unfortunately. But I think everybody stated their position, they all understood where they, you know, everybody understood why they were taking that position, and there was no discord, I think, when we left. So with that...
I've got a question, just, just on this one here. I mean, you've been, you've been saying, may not increase, may not, this is the one time when you say will. It seems to me it's more fair, it's that it may increase.
Oh, definitely, yeah.
But to say the word will is definitive when we have no requirement, it's a, it's sort of like a request. There's a requirement that they have to do outreach, but there's no requirement that they have to hire local, right?
No, that's a fair, that's a fair criticism. I was blasting through these slides early this morning.
So it should be may increase.
Yes.
Right, thank you.
Okay.
Sir. We have one more. Recommendations. Those are the recommendations that are in the board letter, I won't repeat them here, but essentially it's the Safe Harbor PLA, which it keeps me in the realm of County Council's guidance, and, and then putting the outreach requirements into the, all the contract documents that we signed for this. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, if one has a point? Jeff, we originally started off with this whole situation of try to bring all the parties together, try to get something that worked out, that all worked for everybody, and everybody signed on, and it became a, you know, that we all agreed. You sound like you and your staff, and maybe from the CEO's office, have spent hundreds of hours, is that a good estimation?
Total, yes, probably.
Yeah. Trying to get this to do, and you, you've done everything you could to try to do exactly what we asked you to do. And what you're saying is that we just got these pieces that aren't, a couple come together, but we just can't get all the players to play. They're just not willing. And, and even if you had told me that some of the local players wanted to play, but Washington's not going to let them play, and there's just some certain things that they, nobody has the ability to change. And so, but you've done everything you could to try to make it, sounds like you've tried every option to try to get it, but it's just not coming together. Is that, is that a fair assessment?
That's correct. We could not get the RFP that your board described in its discussion, so we, we think we brought you the next two best things.
And, but with this Safe Harbor issue, but only 30% of the people, it's still got that, we're just missing a whole lot of, part of it, right?
That's right. The jurisdictional dispute issues, you're going to miss one group or the other.
Yeah, okay.
And Jeff, all the options are not 100%. There's a lot of holes in all of them.
Yes, sir.
Any other?
Question, is it your direction, or would it be your, your understanding that a Safe Harbor would include all the other things that were all agreed to? Otherwise, the representation fee, all of that would be part of?
That's the way we drafted it, Supervisor Long. That we drafted it so that it matched the PLA number four with, in all respects, except for jurisdictional dispute resolution, it has the carpenters' language in it. And there may have been some minor tweaking that was required at the last minute, but the big issue is that section on jurisdictional dispute resolution. So it gets everybody but the trades.
Okay. You okay with that?
Yeah, I'm thinking, yeah, I have to think through this question before I ask it, okay?
One more point, if you'll allow me, I probably should make. Ventura County Contractors Association put a lot of time into this, and we did get an email from them. In the trades agreement, when it's not applicable to Berg, the core worker requirements are five at a one-to-one exchange rate, and the Contractors Association said that might present a lot of problems for the smaller contractors they represent, because they typically are five or six people on average size, and so half their staff would not be familiar to them. That may prevent them from bidding, they don't think, they might not think they can be competitive. They preferred a first five, language, first five and then one-to-one. And I just, just to be complete and making sure I represented everybody at the table.
All right, I'm going to ask this question, and it's, under an RFP process, you do an RFP, and we've had projects, generally, they've all gone. This would be a first for us to use this. So under an RFP, if you have a dispute, a labor dispute, it goes through the normal, put the tables together and you arbitrate the resolution to it?
If we have a labor dispute on one of our projects that is not under a PLA, it typically is a contractor's problem.
Okay.
Unless we created it or something.
Okay, and so there's language in the, in RFP that would say contractors have to resolve all disputes? Is that as simple as I can put it?
No, Phil?
But what happens here, that stops the project, right, from, from continuing to...
For the record, Phil Nelson of Public Works. Normally, we don't have language like that in the RFP. It's understood that the labor, provision of labor in any of those disputes is automatically the contractors to resolve. It's only if we choose to take some of that on through, or define the process through an RFP, or through a PLA. But in all our other projects, for example, the clinic, we had a healthy mix of both union and non-union. I'm not even aware if we had any disputes, if they were, they were all handled by the contractor and the unions. It's something they normally do on every job, so it's...
That was my question, I don't recall in things we've done past that we've had disputes, so I...
We're lucky in Ventura County.
...how we normally would handle them anyway, so...
But Jeff, that would stop the, the project, right, if there was a disruption under the RFP?
Not necessarily.
If you had a strike?
If there was a strike, there, there could be some impacts to the project as, there as well. The contractors have ways of dealing with that.
Or walk on.
And their limitations, correct. Any of those things could be an impact on the project. We've been lucky here in the county that we just typically don't have those issues.
Yeah, as I say, you, you built some pretty big projects here and done some pretty good work, and our unions, non-unions get together and do a tremendous job together, don't they? They've proven that.
We've had a great relationship with our, with our union and non-union contractors and workforce.
Right.
And as I said, in the county here, with, with the jail and JJC.
That's right.
The clinic, we just have not had issues. And we've had union and non-union on both. We get great work from both workers.
Yeah. And I think that's what we've seen with a good group of union people and a good group of non-union, they've all worked well together and made it, and made it done. We've done some great projects without having, and didn't cost a taxpayer lots of money through disputes and delays and everything else, so that's good, I'm glad to hear that.
That's true, but it doesn't rule out the possibility.
Yeah, that's wonderful. Okay.
Procedure question, when did this agreement become available to the public to review?
About 6:00 o'clock last night.
Yeah, it really, to me, it's, that is a bit of an issue, if this is something we're looking at approving today, that it hasn't been vetted with enough time.
Okay, any additional? I have quite a few speakers, and about 20 speakers or so, and I'm going to limit that to three minutes. And if you have somebody that spoke and said what you wanted to say, you know, you can, you know, kind of shorten that some. The first person that I have is Michael Bennett, followed by Eric Christian. Michael Bennett.
Greetings, Council. I'm going to keep mine simple. I was part of the negotiation team representing the VCCA, and Jeff already outlined our single biggest problem. But I just wanted to be clear that the lack of imposition of a PLA limits the county's exposure to a lot of problems. Implementing government-mandated project labor agreement, you're asking for trouble. It's that simple. So Ventura County Community College District did $130 million worth of work without a PLA. No labor disputes, it's the contractor's problem, not you guys. We have liquidated damages on every project. It has to be done by a certain time the jobs get done, as a result. My strong suggestion is, leave this alone. Just contract the work. Thank you.
Thank you. Eric Christian, followed by Sean Schreger.
Eric Christian, Executive Director of the Coalition for Fair Employment in Construction. We've been working for 12 years to keep these type of discriminatory wasteful, and as you've gone through the experience, painful processes and project labor agreements from occurring, and I think you've had a taste as to why. You're trying to square a circle, and what you're ending up with is a trapezoid. As painful it is to watch, you have a simple solution, move forward with the project. You have three qualified bidders with excellent subcontractors. Supervisor seems to be content with knowing that he'll lose a third of those bidders if this PLA is put into place. I would find that shocking if I was a taxpayer, that I'd lose a third of my bidders if I put a project labor agreement in place. But I think it's imperative to know a couple of things about the PLA that seem to be being glossed over, that were assumed they had been taken care of, but in fact haven't. In Sections 3.8 and 3.9, again, a PLA that was made public at 6:00 last night, again, this painful process has to end. You've made a product available at 6:00 last night that's going to govern a $250 million project, and you're going to vote on it today? It's bewildering. But despite the fact that you'll face lawsuits with the PLA, a reduction in bidders, I think you need to look at the PLA, it's presented itself. In the Sections 3, 3.8 and 3.9, the reason for the PLA in the first place was that you needed something to guarantee local hires. The operative word in this provision is encourage. There is nothing that mandates local hires from the unions. It is encourage. That's all you're getting with this. If that's the reason for the PLA, there's no reason for a PLA, because it only encourages it. In Section 3.12, you get to core workers. I'd like all the people that are here with Berg Electric to please stand up. If I could have all the people with Berg stand up. You limit to these, you limit to this fine company, one of the largest in the world, 10 workers, thanks, thanks folks, 10 workers. As you can see, not only are there more than 10 workers that are local that could work on this, but they're qualified and they're ready to work on it. But you limit them to 10, and then they have to go through a one-through-one process up to another 10 through the union hiring hall, and then that's all they get. It's outrageous. That's Section 3.12. Section 5 deals with strikes. Again, Supervisor Zaragoza seems to pretend that a PLA will eliminate strikes, work stoppages, and slowdowns. Well, I've sent you what happened down at Long Beach, where they had pickets on a PLA project. San Francisco International Airport had strikes, the Port of Oakland had strikes. PLA's guaranteed nothing. Union workers had the ability to strike. If there wasn't the ability to strike, this PLA wouldn't have four sections dedicated to what happens if there is a strike. So you gain nothing with regards to strikes and work stoppages. Section 7, this is where we have the ability to have either the carpenters' language or the AFL-CIO language. 280-page RICO lawsuit that the carpenters filed against AFL-CIO. Something tells me you're not going to be able to square the circle when it comes to the carpenters and the AFL-CIO. You need to read this. Why is there 280-page lawsuit, RICO lawsuit, by the carpenters against the trades? And finally, the dual benefits language. In this language, Berg Electric and any other non-union program will have to pay dual benefits, because it leaves it up to the project labor agreement administrator to determine if Berg is paying equal to or greater benefits than the unions.
Eric, thank you.
They have to pay dual benefits that has not been agreed to.
Sean, followed by John Creighton.
Hello, my name's Sean Stauffer. I spoke at the last meeting. I moved to Ventura County 28 years ago, and have lived within five miles of that house ever since. We talked about local hire, and the fact that a PLA does not, does not need to be in place in order to have local hire. So we brought some of our electricians here. We have Ventura County electricians, they're certified journeymen. We also have five state-approved apprentices that are here. I teach in an apprenticeship program that covers Ventura County. Five of the apprentices are here, two of them are in my class. They deserve to be able to work here in Ventura County. We have electricians that are working all over. In fact, I have a foreman that couldn't be here working in Golita. I have another foreman working in Paso Robles right now that couldn't be here. A lot of these guys that are working here now are working in LA, because we don't have the work to keep them busy in Ventura. This is about local hire, let's keep it as local hire. Let's make, make sure that we have local Ventura County electricians working here, whether they're union or non-union. Let's keep them working here in Ventura County.
Thank you. We have John Creighton, followed by Rick Correnthal.
Hello, my name's John Creighton. I've been Ventura County, matter of fact, an OI resident for the last 36 years. I'm a general foreman with Berg Electric for eight years. I've got 26 years doing electrical work in and around Ventura County. This is important to us, to keep this open and fair to everybody the last four years in order to keep working every day. I, myself, like the other gentlemen here, have actually had to travel out of town, and now the closest I can get is Santa Monica. So I just want to come and prove that Berg does have local, long-term employees that are real, really willing and want to work in this, on this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Rick, followed by Kevin Correnthal.
Morning, my name is Rick Correnthal. I'm a 42-year resident of Ventura County. Since retiring from the food industry in 2009, I have served as a volunteer for a major national humanitarian organization, the identity of which I'm not allowed to mention by name. But this is the organization that comes on the scene in disasters, big and small, and attempts to help people with shelter, clothes, food, and to pick up the pieces. I volunteer for the organization even though I've been repeatedly asked to become a paid staff member. I volunteer for the organization even though I have been, I refuse monetary compensation because after spending my whole career working for a dollar, I want to give back to my community with the skills I learned in the private sector. The policy of building unnecessary and special interest-driven costs in this much-needed regional hospital expansion flies in the face of the spirit of my charity. The Board of Supervisors should be looking for every avenue to reduce costs to taxpayers and the patients that will depend on it, just like I forgo a salary so the organization I volunteer for can afford many more meals, or warm hotel rooms when a county resident loses everything in a house fire. I sincerely hope that this board will return to prudence and responsible use of our taxpayer dollars by approving this project to go forward today, free of expensive special interest group deals. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Kevin Correnthal, followed by James Monroe.
Good morning, Kevin Correnthal, resident of Santa Clarita. Six years involved in running down the various aspects of project labor agreements. We've seen they've been used in various ways. Environmental community has been hijacked to use project labor agreements, sign a PLA and these concerns about your project will go away. There's just, the entire record of project labor agreements is one of negativity. The latest reasons that folks call for project labor agreements is that they increase local hire. I think we've pretty much drawn out that issue and proven that that's simply not the case. None of the project labor agreements the staff proposed will noticeably increase or guarantee increases the local hire. guarantee increases the local hire. But the key point that I want to talk about very briefly this morning is in regards to the core workforce issue. The county here employs a number of people to do various jobs here in the county, and it's very important that every day the same people come to do the job that they were hired to do. If for some reason, at some point, a big project was coming upon the county, and they suddenly called in some employees from the county of Los Angeles, I would think that this could create some level of disruption to the activities of those, of those particular departments here in the county that had to get that work done. Some people have compared the process of mixing union and non-union workers to professional athletic teams. I would say this is like sending the Los Angeles Dodgers to the World Series with the Anaheim Angels bench. I think there is a significant issue with regards to the type of training that goes on between these two different groups, and it's very important to allow any contractor, union or non-union, to use the workforce that they have trained, that they have prepared for the work at hand. Berg, as we have pointed out, is more than capable of supplying a great deal of local labor to this job, but local labor is not the only aspect here. One of the key provisions that any municipality must look at when building a project of this nature is to keep costs in line. If adding a project labor agreement to this, even if it did increase some level of local labor on the project, you still need to look at what cost? What cost to the taxpayers? What cost to the future occupants and users of that, of that hospital would be the price for bringing local labor? But of course, we don't even need to deal with that issue, because of course, we now know that none of the project labor agreement options that staff works so diligently on are going to produce any noticeable amount of local hire. So when we came here back in December of last year, Eric Christian and myself, and we told you that the local hire issue was just covered for a project labor agreement, we now know that we were correct, and we've now disputed that local hire is not achieved through a project labor agreement, and I hope that you will now go forward with this project to bidding, free of these special-interest opportunities. And I thank you for your time, and hope that we don't have to have any more conversations about this. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. James Monroe, followed by Greg McInally. McInally.
Good morning. My name is James Monroe. I'm a lifelong resident in Ventura County, and worked for Berg Electric and have for the past 12 years. The last two years, I've been driving approximately 150 miles a day for work, and at the way gas is going up, it's costing me a lot of money. I'd love to have some work in Ventura County. Thank you.
Thank you. Greg, followed by Kenan Carlson.
Good morning. My name is Greg McInally. I'm a lifelong resident of, actually, the city of Ventura, so this hospital project is actually very familiar to me. My children have been raised in this town and gone to school here. I've been with Berg for over seven years. I'm a foreman for the company. I too have gone as far as San Luis Obispo to work, so having a local project would be very important to me, and just, you know, finally stay at home for once. Thank you.
Thank you. Kenan Carlson, followed by Mike Grittens.
Morning, everybody. My name is Kenan Carlson. Thank you for hearing me. I am a local resident here. I live five minutes up the street. My son goes to school five minutes up the street. My wife teaches here. I own a home, pay taxes here. I would love to work here. I coach Ventura Youth Basketball Association here. I help out with AYSO Soccer here. I would love to spend more time with my son here in Ventura, in Ventura. I work here, live here, I play here. This is where I want to stay. Right now, again, working out of town, having to spend money on the gas, the time away from the home, the time away from the kids, this would allow us to have more time together with our families here in Ventura, and not having to work somewhere else. If you want local, just give us a chance. Just give us a chance to work local. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Gritters, followed by William Luddy.
Morning, I'm Mike Gritters, Vice President of Operations, McCarthy Building Companies. Like to start by saying that McCarthy, I've been with McCarthy for 27 years. We have built more hospitals in Southern California in the past 10 years than any of our competitors, either on the short list or off the short list, probably north of 20 hospitals. You know, one of the things that I think was a little bit confusing to folks is the notion that there are still two pre-qualified electrical subs on the list. Those two subs, one is Helix Electric. Helix is non-union, so they would be not able to compete on this project with a PLA. The second is Fisk Electric. We have not done a hospital with either of these two subcontractors. I'm not certain as to their qualifications to build a $200 million hospital, but generally our experience has been that if we haven't heard of them building a hospital, they're probably not going to be qualified. In addition, Fisk is, I believe, owned by one of our competitors. Second point I'd like to make is that there's been a lot of talk about labor peace. In our experience, we have not had a strike impact one of our hospitals, and as I say, we've done more hospitals than any of our competitors in Southern California. I sit on the AGC Union Crafts Committee, work with them negotiating labor agreements with the five basic trades, and, you know, what we have seen is, in general, strikes happen around negotiation time, when the unions are looking for additional benefits or pay. Generally, those negotiations, particularly in a market like this, go fairly well. It's very seldom that we do see strikes. There's been a lot of talk about jurisdictional disputes as a basis for a strike. Most, if not all, I'm not familiar with all the 18 agreements, but most agreements provide for jurisdictional disputes to be resolved without a strike. So then a strike would, in essence, be a union going against the agreements that they've signed with their various signatory contractors. Does, that doesn't mean that they won't strike, it just means that I have not seen it in my 27 years of experience. And finally, I'd like to urge the board, we've spent hundreds of thousands of dollars pursuing this project, I'd just like to urge the board to please move forward with the project under whatever format.
Thank you, Mike.
Could I ask a question?
Go ahead.
On all those 20 or so hospitals you've built in Southern California, have you used Berg Electric each of those times?
Yes, we have. Not all of those times. We have used them, we use them on St. John's and Santa Monica. They're currently building another hospital in Orange. They're on Camp Pendleton, down in San Diego, as well as a couple of other large projects with us. But we use Sasko, who's on other design-build team, on a regular basis, as well as other union contractors. We don't have an issue with union contractors, it's just that on the current pre-qualified list, there is no one that we've, we've done a hospital and we're close to this magnitude with, and that's the reason that we would request that if you do move forward with a PLA that Berg cannot compete, compete under, that you would allow us to have an opportunity to get another electrical subcontractor, this time a union one, pre-qualified.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
William Luddy, followed by Joe Duran.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Bill Luddy. I'm with Southwest Regional Council of Carpenters. First, I'd like to commend your staff for the kind of work and time they put in in trying to come to a conclusion on this. We've worked hard to find a solution, and at this point, I'd only like to clarify one point. When they say an agreement might not cover, would cover 30% of the craft, actually, it's 30% of the work. From the time they start the foundations, laying out the project, pouring foundations and construction, all the way through to setting the locks and turning the keys over so you can operate the building, that's carpenters' work. It's not 30% of the craft, it's 30% of all the work at all stages. Thank you.
Thank you. Joe Duran, followed by the mayor, Jim Dear from Carson.
Thank you, Chairman, board members. Again, I didn't, pretty much, my last presentation just went over basic concern about the carpenters being represented. And again, I do want to also thank the staff, Public Works, Jeff and Bill did an excellent job, and basically, if there's any questions. And again, it is 30%. It's a large volume of work from the start to the finish, so a project without the carpenters is a massive void in the project, and yes, there could be unrest.
Any questions? Thank you, Joe.
Okay.
And we have Mayor Jim Dear from Carson. Welcome, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor.
And that's followed by Tommy F-A-A-V-A-R-R.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak before you, to the Honorable Chair of the Board, Zaragoza, and the honorable members of your Board here in Ventura County. I drove up from Southern Los Angeles County today in order to speak before you, to give you an opportunity to hear from a mayor of eight years in our city, with a tremendous amount of building going on, more building in our city than any other in the area, and we have PLAs on every single project that any public money is invested in. We are a city that is very proud that we were, took the lead in Los Angeles County to bring PLAs to our projects, and my experience as the mayor of the city is that PLAs are the way to go. It's an excellent approach to getting local hiring. You, as elected officials, have a responsibility to bring quality work to the projects that you are bringing forward to the people, and you will find that the local hiring aspect is real, and I must say that some of the comments that were made by previous speakers, Carson's right next to Long Beach, the, the strike and picketing that went on in Long Beach was by a non-signer, not by the PLA signers. So you have a situation where, in our city, we had skeptical council members that I had to convince, we had apprehensive staff members and legal counsel, yet for the past eight and, actually, nine years now, the PLA has been in operation on every single project in our city, and now the staff are true believers, the people of Carson are happy. I believe the people of Ventura County, once you establish this PLA as a way to build and do public projects in Ventura County, in the long run, you'll be doing a favor to everyone. You often have workers that work outside of Ventura County, they're in Santa Barbara County and Los Angeles County right now, I'm sure, living in Ventura County. And when you do the local hiring, you often have maybe electrical worker that's working, living in Ventura County, working somewhere else, but then the job is filled by another electrical worker, and what you're really talking about is creating jobs. And this is a experience that we have in the city of Carson that is very positive, and we got through the rough spots, and sometimes change is good, and sometimes we really have to look beyond what appears to be an apparent or difficulty or risk, because you're responsible for taking some risks to better society.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate you.
Can I answer a question? Yeah, looking at like your redevelopment agency and the bids that you take, you do it both for PLAs and non-PLAs, is that right?
Well, now, our RFPs do include PLA language. Like you, our first ones didn't, and then...
But you do, you do give bidders that option, that they can have a non-PLA, and in some cases, they come in lower and you choose those instead.
Well, yes, we have with and without PLA, and they bid both ways. Often, the bidders, for some reason, they bid exactly the same amount with or without a PLA. That's a contractor's decision to do that. Why it happens, I'm not sure.
And sometimes they come in lower, too.
Sometimes they're lower, sometimes they're lower, right. But, you know, there's, there's a trade-off in life.
It's a good option, you know, I like, I like that ability, you know, and I was looking into us having that ability, too, because then you can take the lowest bid, and you don't have to be as concerned with costs increasing as a result of PLA, so.
Right. That's just...
Well, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, we have another question.
Yes, thank you for driving up. Carson is a general law city.
Correct. Carson's a general law city, that's correct. I'm a directly elected mayor, and so...
Okay. Have you had, did you have a PLA ordinance in place before you entered into a PLA adoption?
No, we instructed staff to negotiate a PLA, and that, once that took place, then now we have it in ordinance.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and welcome to Ventura County.
Thank you very much. It's a beautiful county.
No clap.
He's the mayor.
Okay. Well, let the mayor, okay, get away with that. Tommy, Tommy's next, followed by Michael Lopez.
Good morning, board members, staff and public. Today, I would like all the supporters of a project labor agreement that's here today, from all the trade unions, to stand up, please. I just, I just wanted to say about a project labor agreement and how it's been successful in LA County alone. And there's six to seven general law cities that are affected directly or indirectly when it comes to a project labor agreement. So there is no prohibit, prohibits general law cities in LA County when it comes to a project labor agreement. Now, the successes when it comes to a project labor agreement, Port of Long Beach has a Middle Harbor project, Phase 1 and Phase 2, that has over 70% of local hire within the county, LA County and Orange County, 70%. LA, Los Angeles Police Department and the new admin building in downtown Los Angeles had over 50% of local hire within LA community. Over 50% of local hire community, and that was under a project labor agreement. The Long Beach Airport is currently in its phase of, Phase 2 and Phase 3, and they actually adhere to a project labor agreement that has a local hire requirement also, and they meet the requirements when it comes to a 30% goal, and they could well exceed that goal by the time that project is over. City of Carson has two projects that's going so far that are public projects, and they're, they're going to meet those goals also. So when you come, when it's, we talk about successes, there are successes out there when it comes to a project labor agreement, and all these people that's here behind me that's standing up here, they can testify to that, and how they've improved in their lives when a project labor agreement was put in place on a, on a particular project. And they're here to support that, and we're here to support all the tri-county building trades that's here in this, in this county, and we urge your support for option number four, for a project labor agreement to be adhered to. Thank you.
Thank you, Tommy. Okay, next person is Michael Lopez, followed by Maricela Morales.
You know, there's one simple word that seems to get continuously left out of the conversation about looking for the lowest bid. The lowest bid is completely irrelevant. As a matter of fact, it ought to be thrown out, and many, many times it has. Highest and lowest bid are removed. The one word is responsible bid. Responsible bid. Responsible to the people who are working on it, the people who are just standing up here, and the people who put money into it with an understanding that an agreement would be maintained, that a level of quality of craftsmanship would be adhered to throughout a project. I happen to be involved with the training processes within the Pipe Fitters UA, and again, I said at the last meeting, there's only one group in the United States that spends more money in education of their personnel, that's the US military. The UA, pipe plumbers and pipe fitters, I'm sure IBW and my other brothers in labor will attest to the fact that we train extensively. It's astounding to me that certain contractors in, in this process seem to be unable to work with others well in the playground. I don't get that. We have a saying in the trade that you work yourself out of a job. That is the nature of our business. We move on and work with contractors, whether it's union or non-union. As union and organized labor people, we work with everybody. Kind of makes you wonder why there's just one or two people that don't seem to be able to fit well with the group and create a problem. We're here to get your job done, get it done on time, under budget, quality, and you just saw the people, they're your people. Let's put them to work. Thank you.
Thank you. Maricela Morales, followed by Steve Weiner.
Good morning, Chair and members of the board. Several points. One, to begin with, is history. 10 years ago, we, we fought and we struggled for about three years to pass the first living wage, and it was the county of Ventura that took that leadership role. And following that came the city of Oxnard, which John Zaragoza was on the council at that time, city of Ventura, city of Wyonimi, and during each of those battles, there were the naysayers, there were the, what I call the Chicken Little syndrome, folks, that the sky is falling, the sky is falling, and here we are 10 years later, and we're a living wage region. And it required the leadership of those of you... And it required the leadership of those of you sitting up there, those that are our elected public representatives of us, the taxpayers. And so we're asking today for your leadership. And as was said by the mayor, leadership is, is only true leadership when, in the face of risk, where it requires great courage to get beyond the weeds and see and keep your eyes on the prize. So we're calling for your leadership today, your courage. Secondly, to the point that PLA number four option is a legal risk. Once again, so long as we have lawyers, there will be legal risk of lawsuit. But what we do know, what we do know through reality, not through theory, is that PLAs have been around since 1930, and that there has not been a lawsuit, at least not a successful lawsuit on the books. So we have 80 years of reality that PLAs are useful and practical and find fiscally responsible tools, as for example, the Contra Costa County that has had 10 years, a general law county has 10 years' worth of experience with the PLA policy. And the staff report demonstrates that they have not had any fiscal or legal problems throughout those 10 years. And so once again, as our leaders, keep your eyes on the prize. We need your courage, we need your leadership. Ten years of experience with general law counties having a PLA, and we need this PLA here in Ventura County. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephen Warner's, followed by Shane, excuse me, Stephen Weiner, followed by Shane Weiner.
Good morning, Chairman and Board Supervisors. My name is Steve Weiner. I'm the Executive Secretary of the Tri-County's Building and Construction Trades Council. We met with the county staff, the design-build team, Ventura County Contractors Association, the AGC, and the carpenters, and we negotiated with them in good faith. At these meetings, we came to term on a number of issues comprising, compromising on a number of them. We all agreed on the double benefits issue. In fact, it was our idea to come, put that in there, that they don't have to pay the double benefits. And my good friend Eric Christian, who's from Colorado Springs, at the last meeting, said that he would smile because he's never seen anything like that in a PLA before, so I hope he's smiling. I'm not going to turn around and look.
He's not.
I didn't think so. Contractors wanted, yeah, we agreed on all, all the issues except for one subcontractor who wants to be able to bring in the entire workforce of 40 workers onto the project, even after they appeared at the board meeting stating that they only had 22 workers and nine administrative workers living in Ventura County. Working with the carpenters, we agreed on all the issues except for one, and that's the jurisdictional language, in which the council cannot sign off on anything except for the language that we presented. We started off with the plan language. After that was turned down by the carpenters, we found the language from Northern California, a project up there that the carpenters signed on January 17th, 2012, as did the building trades up in Northern California. The carpenters said they cannot sign the language in Southern California. There are a number of active PLAs that the carpenters have not signed and are working on, especially down in Los Angeles County. These projects go on without any problems, so PLAs do work without the carpenters. As for the core employees, everyone agreed to one-to-one, up to five core employees, except for one subcontractor. You cannot let one subcontractor or one union hold up a PLA. This not only sets a fair playing field, working conditions, transparency on the project, but it's the best way you can ensure a local hire on your project. And we have sent you numbers from Los Angeles County on the local hire. We sent you numbers also from, I believe, San Diego and some other counties. So you do see that local hire works, and also the mayor from Carson admits to that, too. And we thank the mayor for being here and speaking. In this county right now, the Ventura County Medical Clinic is a $4.8 million project. And on that project, only three subcontractors are from the local area. One of the things that I believe Berg Electric said is that they had a local person working up in San Luis Obispo. I believe that local person lives in Santa Barbara County and in Goleta, Berg Electric has a job in there, so they're sending them out of the county, so that local hire doesn't always work all the time with them.
Stephen, can, can you conclude?
I've only got one more thing. They also said that no one is unable to bid on the project. Everybody's allowed to bid on the project. It's a business decision that they make if they don't want to bid on it. And also McCarthy Construction has, has signed on to a project labor agreement on a county hospital, the Martin Luther King Hospital down in LA.
Supervisor, let's hear it.
I'm sorry, what was that last statement you made?
McCarthy has signed on to a project labor agreement that's the Martin Luther King Hospital down in Los Angeles.
Okay.
Thank you. Shane, and the last followed, Shane followed by Rod Cobos is the last, last speaker.
Chairman Zaragoza, honored members of the board. First, I'd just like to thank Jeff Pratt, Phil Nelson, and Mike Powers for yesterday. I know there are a couple of things, thank them for yesterday, plus thanking them on trying to get all the parties involved on this project labor agreement. I know there's a lot to juggle between the carpenters, Berg Electric, the IBW, the different trades involved, and it's very much appreciated. And even though we gave Jeff a hard time, appreciate everything Jeff Pratt has done. Yesterday, the county was able to facilitate a meeting with Berg Electric and myself. I felt the meeting went very well, and no matter what the outcome is today, it was probably a long time coming, and I'm glad I was able to meet with representatives of Berg and, and talk. It's probably been a long time coming for the IBW, and that was much needed. Some of the things we discussed and things I was trying to put them at ease, because this would be the first time possibly they'd be working on a PLA with our involvement, is the fact the IBW, it's in our best interest to work with them. We're obviously two from this county, work with each and every one of you, plus the county residents. I don't need any phone calls, and most of you know my phone numbers. If we're having any issues on the job, and if we're successful on this, and we're on the job, our job is there to make Berg Electric money, work with their current employees that they have on the project, and move the project forward and have it on time and within budget for you, our customers. I also discussed training, fact, and the fact that Berg Electric does invest in the training as well as the IBW. I also explained if there's something special, although we do OSHPOD classes every year for hospital work, we're on every major hospital project in this county. If there's special things Berg Electric wants us to do, I'd be one to entertain looking at that, even paying for and out of our general fund to, to help mitigate any issues and make sure our people are hitting the job with them or what they want and, and have the background that they need. Our commitment is to promote a harmonious labor management relationship. I let them know that whether they're signatory or not, I'm going to treat them like a signatory contractor, and I'm here to make this project work for, for both the county, them, and, and us. You know, the fact one gentleman said there were five apprentices here from Berg, I believe that live in the county, I know I'd given you some information at the last meeting, that ABC has a total of nine apprentices that live within this county, looks like five of them work with Berg. I'd work with Berg Electric on the core employees criteria that I kind of presented. I'd work with them on bringing those apprentices up here. But also keep in mind with that, with the five apprentices that they have living here, I also showed you documentation that we have 78 apprentices working here. We're getting ready to bring another 25 in this year. And we've been training apprentices here in the county, actually at our school located in Oxnard since 1950. In closing, no matter what your decision is today, I want to respect all the board members' decision. Like I told Mr. Powers the other day, we're going to be working well with you guys on the next project and the next issues facing our county citizens. And, you know, we would definitely respect you, respect everything that you've done so far, and we're here to work with you. Other than that, I thank you for your time, and I will probably see you on the next one. Thank you.
And the last speaker is Rod Cobos.
Good morning, Chairman Zaragoza, Board Supervisors, Mr. Powers, Rod Cobos. I'm a representative with the plumbers, pipe fitters, and apprentices, welders, local 484 out of Ventura. I know we're going to get our exercise this morning. I'd like all those in the room who have benefited from a public works prevailing wage job, I'd like to see everyone stand up in this room who's benefited from that. Thank you. I don't, I could stay standing. You could, go ahead and sit. Thank you. As, as you can see, the payment of prevailing wage on public works projects has benefited all. And those wages just didn't come from anywhere. They came from organized labor negotiating with management to maintain a standard of wages so everyone in this room could, could benefit. You know, over the last few meetings, we've had contractors come up and say, well, Berg's not going to bid it if there's a PLA. And then they came back and said, no, no, they're going to bid it because it's, you know, they, they want to stay in the game and bid the project. Mr. Bennett from the Ventura County Contractors Association brought up the subject about the $130 million on the Ventura County Community College District. But how many of, how much of that work went to local workers? That's, that's, that's the point we're trying to make here, is that local workers with good, responsible contractors that pay the right wages, that pay the, the benefits, and the whole talk about dual payment, let's see if we could get a cheaper package for the worker in a health and welfare or a pension plan that, really, who pays for it in the end is the worker. The worker pays for it because, so if a contractor gets a cheaper health and welfare package, but is it comparable to what all the different crafts, health and welfare package as far as the prevailing wage and what it's allocated? Are we comparing apples to apples? I'd like to thank the board for bringing this subject of local hire and project labor agreements front and center, especially in this critical time in our economy, and I appreciate all that you've done for the building trades. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cobos. We are going to take a 10-minute break, and then we'll be right back. Thank you. We're going to re-convene the meeting for the, for the Board of Supervisors. And, Michael?
Thank you, Chair. Just before we continue the discussion, I just wanted to echo what Shane Werner said about the nature of the discussions here and the good faith that everyone has come to the table with. It really is very impressive. Everybody open-minded, trying to be creative, trying to find some solution. And IBEW Tri-Counties, the Contractors Berg, Jeff Pratt and his team really come in just the good-faith, all-out efforts to try to reach a compromise here. Thanks, thanks to everyone.
Thank you, Michael.
Okay, Board members?
Any questions?
Jeff, I just want to clarify, I'm just asking Phil this, we wanted to clarify this. The dual benefits issue, we're dealing with prevailing wage on this project, no matter what, union, non-union, right? So there is the idea that if benefits are equal based on prevailing wage, then everybody pays the same. There's no cost difference to a union or non-union contractor.
In the aggregate, yes.
Pardon?
In the aggregate.
In the aggregate, yes. However, if there's a prevailing wage with wages equal, but if somebody else pays higher, somebody else would have to match that dollar amount in benefits, based under your, this PLA committee?
No, the prevailing wage is the baseline wage that will be paid on the job.
I understand that.
There may be wages that are much higher. I think the comment that was made by one of the speakers was that it left everything up to the project labor coordinator. And that's essentially true, and that we felt was a good thing. We had some serious discussions with them, and this was during the last negotiation prior to this one, where we resolved that issue. If prevailing wages were going to be paid, and they had a problem with it at the unions, they would, if they had a problem with the benefits, for example, if they wanted to take healthcare, for example, and say, your program's not as good as my program, well, that would go through the project labor coordinator and then up to the Division or the Department of Industrial Relations, DIR, which is responsible for administering the prevailing wage law. And it would be held, handled that way. There wouldn't be, and so, given that, we felt there was a certain amount of comfort that if prevailing wage was being paid, there wasn't going to be any dispute.
Okay. I guess what I, I just don't want to have things come up later. And what that would be is, all of a sudden, we got these contractors who bid, and they get the job, and all of a sudden, my healthcare plan costs me this, and their healthcare plan costs this, we're paying more, so you've got to pay this much, and I bid it at some other price. And so, how do you get around that?
Well, the contractors were part of that, all the design-build teams were part of that discussion, and they felt comfortable with the resolution. But another way to do it, if your board so desired, we could be very specific, we could get more specific on the procedures used, or who's making the final determination.
Yeah, because this dual benefit thing sounds like you worked out, and I just hate to have anything that was kind of gray that could come back and bite either party, because even if a non-union contractor was, I mean, a union contractor had it, and all of a sudden, a non-union had a higher, and they, well, you've got to match mine till I can get equal. That's not fair to anybody once they're in the middle of something. Anyway, so that was a little bit of a concern that I might have had. But that's my question until we're ready to make some comments. Okay? Any other questions?
One question, if I might. The jurisdictional dispute issue, if there were a, if going with the staff recommendation of Safe Harbor, which would be PLA number one, if there, the language that's in it now is that that's used by the carpenters, if that were removed and we go to what would be the process that's adhered to typically under an RFP process, is that workable?
It is. And I should probably clarify for the board, I don't know if I did this in my presentation, but the reason that we dropped the carpenter's language in was because the trades had told us that they would only sign PLA number four. So we knew they weren't signing PLA number one, and it just was a gimme on the carpenter's language. So, and to answer your question, yes, we can go with the, letting the contractor handle the labor disputes.
Okay. Any other questions? Comments?
I have another question.
I do appreciate the process and everybody working, and I know, I talked to Jeff yesterday, and it was a long, arduous process that everybody went through. I think, though, from this board we came from, we came from this idea, we asked everybody to come together, and everybody to try to find a solution to make this happen. And that was our goal. We do not want to pick winners and losers, we just want to provide the opportunity for great work to be done by great contractors in this community, and to have everybody have a chance to work. And it sounds like, from these kind of projects, from what I've been able to find, from the union side, they do 80, 50 to 80 percent of the work most of the time anyway, that is their, their deal, because there, a lot of these big contracts are union. It is. But that wasn't, I don't think, our issue, union or non-union. Our issue was just the opportunity for people to work, get the project ongoing, have a quality project that we all could be proud of, we have a healthcare system that we are all very, very proud of, and we want to have a facility that would be exactly the same thing. So we asked that all parties come together. What we found here is that all parties could not come together. And in a situation, if we go down a certain path, we could lose one-third of our qualified bidders. The idea is, I don't even, I'm not even sure I'm comfortable with only three bidders, but there's only so many people who can do these kind of projects at the level that we want them done at. So that's it. And it sounds like if we lose one or two of the bidders, we could be in a position that we may have to wait a couple more months, as Jeff had said, for more processed, more qualified bidders to get involved, or some of the subcontracts to be involved, and we know that could cost us $1.62 million. We've already spent a lot of money waiting on this project. So, and we're not guaranteed that we're going to have a local hire guarantee in this. We can't do that, we already saw that, we saw it's part of it. And it does, we also know it doesn't guarantee labor peace. One thing this county has been great at is we have labor peace, we have a great group of people that do the work in this county, quality people who do great work, and we've had labor peace, and that is a testimony to the idea that everybody gets along. We've found that from our own county organizations within the county, to the different union, non-unions, they get along, they get good work. We've seen it done on our own recent hospital piece we did over at the hospital. So, the other thing, and then, we just talked about a little bit this dual benefit issue, I do not want to see any contractor, union or non, get... I do not want to see any contractor, union or non, get messed up in the middle of a contract. The other thing is that this board has worked and fought to provide the highest quality healthcare that we could find anywhere, and we have done that. Under our current leadership at that hospital, and our previous leadership with our current CEO, we have done tremendous, for all of you who live here, get the opportunity to use it, you know what that is. So we fought to make sure this community is provided with that, and that's why this hospital is so important to all of us. This board has also ensured that we have the ability to pay for everything we do. One thing you notice is a lot of counties are laying lots of people off, lots of issues going on. We have done everything we could to financially ensure that we can continue to pay for what we do. So adding any burden of cost, this board, for all the five and a half years I've been here, this board has fought diligently to ensure that they can afford to pay for what they do, and adding cost is a real problem. Adding anything that increases cost is a real problem, because we are asking every single county employee to find every penny they can save to ensure that you, as a public, get all the services that we hope we can provide for you. And so, now that we've spent months going through this, we've already spent more than a million dollars on this, so that really irritates me. But we wanted to go through and be open and fair, but to the taxpayers, we've got to continue the idea of spending millions of dollars in any way or shape for more than we are paying now, because we know, all of you know, the state is not giving us any more money, your tax dollars are going other places, and there's no, any extra money anywhere for us to spend. So we have to be so diligent that we get the best pricing, the best quality, and that this is done on time, and it's open, and we move forward. So that's important. So we cannot delay any further, we cannot spend, as Jeff has said, $400-plus thousand dollars a month, and we don't know if those 2 percent numbers are correct, it could be 3 percent. We're just taking some numbers, we just need to make sure we move forward. So I appreciate where you've come, what you've done, but it's time for us to move forward. And I do not see that we have met what we are asked to be done, and hundreds of hours have been spent to try to do this. We have not come together and asked all the players to agree. That has not been done. We gave everybody a lot of chance, we asked the taxpayers to give us more time and spend a million dollars to wait, but we can't wait any longer. So I propose here that I make a motion that we move forward with this project under the employment laws of this state, the ordinances that we have in this county, and that we move forward with that, and that that happens now, and we ask Jeff and his team to get this thing moving, and that provides you, every single one of you who live in this county, and even ones who come out of the county who need quality healthcare, that they have that opportunity to have it as soon as possible. That would be my motion. Is that number one? PLA one? No, I'm not. I'm saying we don't do any of them, we just go forward without any of them. Just, under the, you know, the laws that we have currently, prevailing wage and everything else that we have, and the ordinances in this county. Without a PLA? Without the PLA, that would be my motion. I hope that somebody would second that.
I would like to comment. I'm very frustrated, because I got a packet that indicated I'd get material on this on Friday. It didn't come out with the packet. There is no material that was given to me until I am looking through emails at 6:30 last night, and I'm being asked to vote on a 33-page contract today that I haven't read, a very important contract, and I have a lot of concerns about that. I don't have, I have a staff member specifically to assist me on this, we stayed until the office until after 6:00 last night, we didn't have the material. So I am feeling frustrated that I don't have the ability to read the contract before I vote on it. So at this point, I'm not voting on it.
Okay, we have a motion, and... So you could do this, because you can't, you can't read it, you could second this, and we can move forward.
I don't have, I don't have the information to vote one way or the other, that's the way I feel, because I, you know, I spent some time between, you know, I spent some time sleeping last night, I woke up in the morning, you know, and I've got this, and I just haven't had the chance to read it. Has anyone on this dais read it?
No, and I would agree with you, we don't have it, we've also, they did not, you even last time said, "I hope everybody to come together to provide and do this," it hasn't happened, so no matter what this contract says, we have already heard from Mr. Pratt that it has not met the requirements and qualifications that we put out before this body.
I did read it. It did come late last night, and I did read it. Did I read every single word of every one of the options? Absolutely not. But I did read it, and, you know, staff, we gave them a short window, they moved as quickly as they could. You hear about the hours they spent with all of the interested stakeholders to try to bring something forward to meet our timeline. So are you asking that we take more time, that we delay this?
I really don't like the fact that each delay costs a lot of money, but I would be more comfortable voting on it if I had the opportunity to read it and vet it and understand what I am voting on.
So we're here all day, so would you like to delay this for two hours, three hours, to read it? And I'm not trying to put you on the spot, I'm trying to, well, I'm done.
I read it, I read it, in fact, I was up till about 11 o'clock reading it last night, too, you know, so, and of course, you know, by 11 o'clock, I'm pretty sleepy, but I did read it and get, you know...
Yeah, I mean, if I got a call and said, "Hey, you've got an email that's got the document," I mean, but I was there, and it wasn't.
Okay, we got a... I think we've been asked, elected by the body of this county to make decisions, and sometimes they're hard and sometimes they're tough, you just got to make a decision on what you're at. I think we trusted this, our CEO and our public works to do this, to put this together in the way that we do, understand it, you've gone through it. I'm not an attorney, you know, to understand it, reading through, but at the end of the day, I still think it doesn't meet what we required. It doesn't meet, I don't care if we say we just do this, you know, option one, it doesn't meet what we asked. We asked everybody to come together, and I don't think this board wants to pick winners and losers. Right now, all the union people are not going to have any difference in what they have, we have a labor agreement or not of any kind, they're not going to get a difference because they follow their union rules. That's what they follow. So all this affects is a non-union group, it's going to be a very small group probably on this project. And at the end of the day, I look at this saying, let us move forward, and let us just let what we've always done in this county go forward, which is the free-market work, and at the end of the day, the free-market works, and unions get 85 percent of the work, that's the way it works, that's the way it is. Let them do it, and let the people work, let the people that come here, union and non-union, just go to work. And that's what we need to be doing, that's why I say, having this agreement doesn't change any of that piece, all it does is force some other people to pay, some contractor who, if he's a non-union, to pay hundreds of thousands of dollars in dues, no matter what they want to call it, it's dues, somebody's going to pay it, it's going to come out of somebody's pocket, it's going to, or else it's going to cost us more money, and we're going to have all these additional other things we have to do. Let's just move people and get them to work, and not let the taxpayers to spend more money for every single month, because we know, that is our requirement as supervisors, and we need to do that, we just need to move forward. We've been able to build projects in this county without going through all this, and we've had all this peace, and we've had quality people on both sides of the aisle do the work.
Chair. I'd just like to comment, although Supervisor Foy and I disagree on lots of issues, there's one thing I think we agree on today, and that is, it's time to move forward. This is, this has been an issue that has been out there, and it's just time. With regards to this coming in, this is, these are all the issues that have been on the table for quite some time. In fact, I see no new components, it really was a question of giving maximum time, even a negotiation yesterday at 1:00, for staff to see if they, if these, if there was a way to match these puzzle pieces together. So, as this came in last night, I think, I think staying on top of this issue, there, you know, it was, it was something that I was able to read last night, it was something that I was still reading this morning, but certainly able to digest it, and I'm ready to make a decision on this, because I think we all have reached that point where it's time to, it's time to move forward on this option. We've tried to do our best to get local hire onto this project, and there's obviously a lot to that, but there are no compelling new things, it's just, it's just that, it's the different configurations or the different options that we have in front of us here at this point in time, with staff giving us their recommendations.
So we have a motion?
So I'm ready to do that.
And we don't have a second? So that, I... Ask, anybody going to do it? Put a second, let's move forward?
Let's do further discussion.
Let's do further discussion.
Not in the motion, I'm not going to second the motion.
So that dies?
And, thank you, all of you. I appreciate all of you being here numerous times, I appreciate, and I think that there has been true due diligence by staff, very, you know, they certainly did take the board's direction, and there's been lots of conversations and discussions, and I appreciate that the board has taken its time on this. I don't see it supervisor as money spent, there's no question, there's probably been maybe some loss in the market of not being out in the market now, but it's, I think...
I'm only taking our experts' ideas.
I think that, I think we need to make a decision, I think we need to move ahead. And I, as we headed down this road, the medical center and this replacement hospital operates as a enterprise system, and that it has to pay for itself. So there aren't general fund dollars that are going on top of this, but there clearly are taxpayer dollars that are going to help get this built. And as we started down the local hire path, it was to say, let's do our best to keep most of those taxpayer dollars home with our local workforce. And that clearly was it, it was, and I know others will put other motives to that, but that is clearly where we headed. I think that what's occurred with the pre-qualified contractors was very important, and we have good contractors who are willing to work on this project. I think that we have all been interested in making sure that we do our very best to lower the risk. And there is risk, and I know that, yes, we're elected, we're elected sometimes to take those risks, but we always evaluate the level of that risk, and rely on our experts to tell us what the level of that risk is. I think that the goals of having local hire, the goals of having the best bid to keep our cost both reasonable for the taxpayers and for a good quality project, and the goals of having the least amount of risk and having local hire, and learning through all of this that there are disagreements amongst our very good trade people in this county, disagreements that are out of control of this board. There are longstanding agreements, jurisdictional disputes, that are out of control of this board. We task our staff to do the very best from our last meeting to get to today, to get, see where we can find more agreement rather than less, and as you've heard from the presentation from staff, just could not get there. That's unfortunate. I would like to have had something before us today that we could have all embraced 100%. So I think going out of the room today, there are going to be some unhappy people. And some of it, again, is the nature of, is the nature of the enterprise, and the nature of our good workforce, and our union leadership and union workers who are all very skilled, qualified, and dedicated to do a good job on this project, whatever comes forward. I am prepared to put a motion forward to support the staff recommendation, which is PLA number one, which is the Safe Harbor. And to include in that, that all of the agreements reached regarding the representation, all of those things that there was agreement from contractors and trades be a part of it, and to propose that we remove from that the carpenter's language unsettling disputes, and go to what would normally be the process under an RFP. And to ask the trades, and I know this is difficult, I know we've spent hours on this core language thing, and I would just, I would ask that we get something that, again, because as you know from that Safe Harbor model, it's the 60-hundred-day payroll language that that is utilized, and I believe we will, we're not going to get 100%, but we're going to, that will generate local hire for us even under that model. And as we, it's taken us this long, probably even more than we thought, but the risk is too great with, and the disputes between, or the, not disputes, but the disagreements between the trades, I cannot resolve them. So I'm going to put forward that, that we move ahead with the staff recommendation, and that we ask that this be signed onto by Friday. We've got to keep a tight agreement for signatures on this to move forward, to not lose more time, to get this project underway, to get people to work. That's my motion.
And then?
Well, obviously, if it's not, if it's, you know, I would say that this goes to the trades to say, "I ask you to come to the table and make this work by Friday." And if it doesn't, we're, we have to default to an RFP, we have to move ahead, we have to get this project underway. And I would propose that if there's support, and there should be further discussion on this, if it defaults to our RFP, that it clearly has, as in the recommendation number one, that it clearly has requirements for local labor outreach, and accounting by staff that that does take place, and that there, and a report out on the success of that.
So which section are you amending?
I probably won't get a second on that. Pardon me?
Which section's being amended?
No, the motion didn't get a second, Roberta.
No, no.
The first one. Which section's being amended?
You are making a change to what is out here?
It's under the, Jeff will tell me where it is. The language under...
You're making a change to the RFP. I think it may be Section 7, I think you're referring to the jurisdictional...
Yes, I am referring to the jurisdictional.
I'm sorry, Supervisor, I'd like to answer your question, I believe it's Section Article 7, jurisdictional dispute, starting on page 15.
So my, because there is this unresolved jurisdictional dispute between trades and carpenters, and our RFPs historically in this county have had a process that is, disputes are handled by the contractor, to remove a barrier from the trades signing onto a Safe Harbor, and they said they're not going to sign onto one, and, you know, I would certainly ask them to dig deep and reconsider whether or not this can work for them, to get a PLA model underway, but, so it would remove that language, that seems to be a... My, it's on?
Is that 7.2?
Jeff Pratt, for the record, it's the entire, as I understand, the entire stack argument.
Oh, Section 1 through Section 7, Section 7.1 through 7.6?
Yes.
Yes. Correct. Okay, motion?
There's a motion?
No.
Seeing no second, Chairman Zergos, I'll make a motion, a concept for Option 4?
Option 4. Okay.
Speaker, please.
Option 4.
Do we have, do we have the contract for Option 4 available to us? Do we have, do we have the contract for option four available to us?
We have PLA for, so we have this passage of 16.
Okay, I don't have a copy of that one.
And I'm going to second that.
I'm going to abstain. I haven't even looked at that one. I was looking at the staff one, so this is another-
I'm going to second the option four.
Thirty-seven pages.
And I believe that option four provides the most amount of labor stability, as mentioned by Mr. Pratt, 70% of the workforce. And the trades mentioned that they will sign option four. And also the, this will include provisions to prevent strikes, lockouts, and other stoppages for the length of the project because I think it's important. And I understand that we're not able to reach 100% agreement. However, I believe that we must start this project as soon as possible. It's important to all of us. It's costing us money. I'm not sure if it's $400,000, but, per month, but I think that it is costing us money, and we need to start as soon as possible. And I believe that my decision to support option four would be the most beneficial to Ventura County taxpayers, and we need jobs, 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 as was mentioned by all of us. So option four is my preference. That's why I'm seconding this motion.
And this is the one that would exclude Berg, is that correct?
Yes.
And it does also precludes McCarthy from getting another qualified bidder? Because that would take time to have McCarthy. I'll stay out of it. It's just not the best way.
So let's go ahead and vote.
Is the machine working?
Yeah.
Supervisor Bennett is a yes. Supervisor Parks abstaining. Supervisor Long, no. Supervisor Foye, no. Supervisor Zerovas, yes.
Okay, so that fails, so. So what, Leroy, where are we on this?
Well, that, the motion fails, so there's just no action on this direction to staff. So staff will have to decide how they would ordinarily proceed in a situation like this. I'm not sure that the, that the board even has to approve the RFP. Normally, staff issues RFPs without going to the board, although this one is special, and I anticipate staff will be coming back on other issues with the RFP, such as the stipend.
I'd just like to show you, it's unfortunate that, you know, that number four didn't pass because we have 70% of our people here need jobs, you know, for the community to be-
Well, supervisor, you know, you know-
Everybody gets the opportunity to work now.
And I think we have disagreement there. I think it's unfortunate, but I think, I think our risk, I've already said what I thought about the risk issue, and I think that with four to lose a third bidder or a third bidder to ask us to go back out to allow for two or three or four more months of cost would be unfortunate for the taxpayers. And, you know, this can really disrupt the board, and I think if we, philosophically, I believe PLAs, obviously, they can function, and they can function well. And in hindsight, had we had a discussion of this, perhaps an ordinance that set the framework for us, we wouldn't have spent the months we've had already on this discussion, and there'd have been agreement to say, this is how we're going to do business in this county. But we didn't. We hadn't, we hadn't gotten that far.
And also, when we go out for qualified bids, at that time, you let them know that we'd like to have them bid maybe PLA and not PLA, like the city of Carson does. And then just also looking at the city of Carson, they actually have a staff member they hire to ensure and encourage and fulfill all those efforts to look to see how we can hire locals. So there is things that we could do in terms of encouraging to the point of actually hiring someone to work to see that we do recruit locally.
And, you know, the mayor mentioned, too, that they have not had any problems in Carson, you know, so it's working there, and it's a general law city.
But they do, in Carson, they get both PLA and non-PLA bids.
Well, we can start one-
Well, that doesn't mean that they haven't had litigation or they haven't had incurred cost.
And the litigation is a big concern that I have with this also.
I'd like to try a motion again. Maybe you'll second it this time. A PLA that says we're going to have a, now, you know, maybe I should just look out here at the trades and say, is there any way you can get there with a PLA that says you've got a 60 to 100-day payroll hire window? And you know what that means, and is there any way, you know?
Well, it's time for us to go forward. We in this county have been so fortunate with both sides can work together, and we've done some wonderful things. Let's just do what we always do and keep it going, and let Jeff and his team get back to work and let them do their thing, so.
And I think the thing we've lost sight of is that we've got three contractors. Nobody knows how you're going to end up with the bid. You know, they're all going to sharpen their pencils, and that's what I want, and that's what every taxpayer in this county wants, a sharp pencil.
We do have a-
Supervisor Long, 60 to 100 days is in project labor agreement number four for the core employees. That language is in that.
Yes, but it also calls out that 10 to 1, that, you know, this is a pure, as county council advises, the most risk adverse model is that one that doesn't put a number to that core. And, you know, I understand that, I know what the trades would like. I appreciate the difficulty of this.
Okay, I just wanted to answer your question when you were talking about-
If you have work with it.
And it is the easiest way to make sure we ensure local labor. And that hasn't been tested on the core employee language anywhere in California or in the country.
That's number four.
Number four.
Thank you, sir.
Unfortunately, I think we've become a lightning rat on this one, and the risk is high.
Okay, so we're going to adjourn to a close session, and then we'll reconvene in Camarillo this evening at 6:00.
If we're adjourning, I'd just like to emphasize we began this with a focus on local hire. It evolved based on county council into a discussion of PLA. I want to make sure we end with an emphasis to staff that we do everything we can. I think we can disagree about how do we get to that local-
I think we can 100% agree on that.
How we get to local hire, we can disagree about how we get to local hire, and obviously we haven't come to agreement about how we get to local hire. But that is what it's all about. And if we had have gone forward the way I wanted, I would have, I would have put more things in and pushed in terms of even more things to make sure that the local hire was going to happen. But that's where we are at this point in time. I just want to remind staff of that, this economy, people in Ventura County, we want to try to keep as many of these jobs local as possible.
So your point is that through the RFP, that there's that strong language that says that's what we're looking for?
Certainly. Certainly, that's when we brought this, you and I, you know, said we want to do local hire. I just want to make sure we remind our, we remind our staff of the spirit of that. We want a great project. We want, we want a project that's cost effective, and we want to do everything we reasonably can to make sure we hire locally.
And Jeff, you know, local hire is very important, you know, that's extremely-
And I would like to, if you could look into what they are doing, like, for example, in the city of Carson, where they have a hired staff person whose job it is, is to look to see, whose job it is to increase the amount of local hire. I mean, if we're dedicated to it, this is, if this person will get us there, I think that would be a really worthwhile thing to do and something. I'd like to find out how effective it is in Carson, and if we can do that here, I'd be most willing to do that.
And I was talking to the mayor at break time, and he's willing to help us, too, you know, so. Mr. Mary, I really appreciate that very much, and I want to thank everybody for their input. And thank you so much for being here this morning. So we go into a close session, and then we'll reconvene again at, in Camarillo at 6:00. Thank you.
That's probably a good time.